Thank you very much. Welcome, members, members of the public to your AGM on Monday the 6th June. Agenda item one, apologies, we have an apology from councillor Liam Magill. Do you have any other apologies? No, thank you very much, members. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome back councillor Paul Rankin. Welcome, Paul. You're now a stranger to this chamber indeed and hopefully now you're back, you'll be able to get back into working for your constituents that you were likely to be so. So, welcome back. Thank you. I also like to welcome our new councillor, councillor Jessica Johnson from the last party. Welcome, Jessica. I'm going to open the floor to you to say a few words.
Hopefully I'll get used to this a bit more. No, I hadn't really prepped anything. I didn't think I was going to get called out like this. But thank you very much for all your welcomes and stuff. I'm really looking forward to getting started and hopefully I'll be able to make a mark in this council in the next year or so. And all be well in the future as well. So, thank you very much for introducing me to everyone on the council and hopefully I'll get some decisions made as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're more than welcome and just remember you have to go to committee meetings now. Councillor Baxter, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just echo your comments of welcome to firstly, I was going to say Alderman Rankin, but as it is at the minute, he's councillor Rankin back to the benches. I think Paul updates quite a few of us on these benches as a local councillor way back many, many years ago when he was a young man in his 40s. When he came on the Bambridge Council. So, he's certainly no stranger to the, he's certainly no stranger here and a very welcome addition back on the benches and pay tribute to the outgoing councillor who's, we're delayed tonight in the Public Gallery. Keith Park, who kept the seat for Paul until he, when he came back there. So, just a very warm welcome back to councillor Rankin and also to councillor Johnson. It's nice to see you in the chamber tonight. I've seen your photograph briefly on social media over this last number of weeks. So, we're looking forward to working with you and I wish you all the best as you join your land colleagues over there on the benches too. So, welcome.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. Alderman Spears.
Lord Mayor, I just want to be associated with the comments that have been made. Councillor Rankin, as he is now, has departed us for a short time and he's back again. So, I'm not sure whether he enjoyed the holiday or the staying in another place or not, but in any event, we'll no doubt hear more about that on some future occasion. But welcome back and indeed, like others, did see the pictures on Facebook and social media in relation to councillor Johnson. And again, like others, welcome here. You're always welcome and of particular interest in what councillor Baxter said. He certainly was welcoming you councillor Johnson, but I've no doubt it'll not be very long before he'll be campaigning to take your seat. So, that'll be the nature, that'll be the nature of politics. So, in any event, let's hope that you enjoy your time here and there is an election next May. So, we'll see what happens then. Maybe councillor Baxter will have a different view slightly then. Okay. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Spears. Councillor Whalton.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. And like Alderman Spears want to be associated with the remarks, both welcoming back councillor Rankin and welcoming councillor Johnson. It did strike me as councillor Baxter was speaking to councillor Johnson, the pleasantries and the niceties and I thought, see how long that lasts. Give it 20 minutes. But look, you're very welcome on behalf of the SDLP group and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, councillor O'Halloran. Alderman Rankin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just want to thank everybody for the kind comments and also welcome councillor Johnson along to the chamber. And I also paid tribute to my colleague and friend Keith Park for the time that he spent on council. And you never know, maybe having seen the last of Keith, he's certainly made an impact when he was here. And thank you and pass on the thanks to him for the way that he conducted himself for the 10 weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rankin and councillor Pope.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And it was just also to welcome councillor Rankin back to the chamber and look forward to working together again. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pope. And yes, indeed, I didn't see it there, Keith. Congratulations on your tenure. Well done. And no doubt I haven't seen the last of you. So no other speakers. Thank you, members. Agenda item two, declarations of interests. For all those members, you can forward them through to yourselves or whenever we come across the agenda. Agenda item three, remarks by himself. So what a, members, what a fantastic year we have had. We have enjoyed every last hour, every day of the last year as Lord Mayor. And of course, my wife Andrea was there by my side as Lady Meres. And I said at the start of my tenure that you'll all get to know my family and I know the many of you did over the last year. So on behalf of the Lady Meres, Andrea, Alex, Cody, Billy and myself as outgoing First Minister, sorry, citizen of the ABC Council, we would like to extend our sincere thanks and gratitude to all those that we have met over the year and had the pleasure to have hosted throughout the last year. A special thank again to my wife Andrea Chilton and my mum and dad. First and foremost, to Lord Mayor's office, Susan or Suzy, on April, we appreciate your full support throughout the last year for your support with the Dari and events and helping support my chosen charities for the last year. Angel wishes and guide dogs NI. At the pleasure of handing over a cheque to Gay from Angel Wishes earlier this afternoon on the guy on the team from Guide Dogs NI last week. I've made some good friends in Les and Stephanie and Monroe the guide dog and who I'm a sim daily. That's my role as Lord Mayor and I now count them as good friends. And I hope they are listening here tonight because they're doing fantastic work and definitely I will be able to help them continue this fantastic work as we move forward. Massive thank you to the staff here in Craig and Civic Centre as due to the COVID pandemic. Most of my time is spent here, as Billy calls it, daddy's big house. To Ryan, Nigel, Peter, Mark, Alison, Grace, thank you so kindly. We had a fantastic time in the crack. It was always neat. And not forgetting Jonathan, the chauffeur Royal, he was always a gentleman in a professional service. And thank you to Eddie, Paul, Phil, Jeff and Liam for the photographic memories. And he definitely couldn't forget to thank my daughter Alex. He spent a lot of time doing the BBC and Jody's. So I have special thanks to her and my mum and dad. Thank you to the Deputy Lord Mayor, our chief executive Roger for your guidance, to the directors, staff, democratic services for your support throughout the year. And it has been invaluable. I appreciate you keeping me up to date in your areas of expertise. So thank you. Last year, when I took over as Lord Mayor, one of my first engagements was opening up a play park. And I had two schools or a few people helping me to open up the park. And the young ones were asking me about the Lord Mayor's chain. So I asked one of them, they wanted word. And next minute, I had a whole queue of young people around the play park. One wearing the chain and the school taking a photograph of it. And that lasted for about an hour. But whenever I hosted another sports, young sports group then in January, some of the young ones were there and they remembered me. And they come over and they said, Lord Mayor, we remember you from opening the play park. And then they had me doing a tic tac. So it was absolutely fantastic. The centenary of Northern Ireland was at the forefront of the Allstate Unionist Party grouping here at the ABC. And really, as we as the party that helped for Northern Ireland, this was an extremely important year for unionism, not only in celebrating the last 100 years, but also looking forward to the next 100 years and beyond. I had the pleasure to welcome the Duke and Duchess of Sussex to officially open our fantastic new South Lake Glazier Centre. I will never forget having the honour to host the Royals. And when standing waiting on the Royals, I asked Roger, what do I do now, burn a main burn COVID? And what do I do if he offers to shake my hand? So Prince Edward came walking down the red carpet and he stuck a big hand out, says, good morning, Lord Mayor, and shook my hand. So fantastic from that perspective to be able to say that of shift the handle for Royal. And then we moved to when Putin's Russian forces invaded the sovereign state of Ukraine. Not only we as a council, but we as a nation held out our hands of friendship and support. And we can be proud that this borough stood up in bringing together the community, businesses, charities and local government and much more, much needed resources to Ukraine and to those who needed it most. I'll never forget the young woman who had invited over the tears of sadness, compassion and drive to help our fellow countrymen and women. We as a borough stepped up. So members, members of staff, thank you so much. For those who helped and continue to help our Ukrainian brothers and sisters in their fight against this great unjust. Being Lord Mayor at a time when businesses have shown resilience throughout the challenges of COVID has been an engagement opportunity to encourage recovery and growth as well as recognition of the importance of listening and reacting to business needs. I would like to see this strengthened in all of our council's offerings to build a robust economic borough. To finish my tenure as Lord Mayor at the honour of being the first citizen for Her Majesty's Platinum Jubilee, what a weekend we have and I'm absolutely exhausted from, from council events, local tea parties, to St Dan's Cathedral. And let's not forget a good marmalade sandwich. I felt proud and humbled to take part in the lighting of the bickens and to hear Her Majesty's clear message of hope and togetherness, for example of dignity and strength, her compassionate pride for a wonderful country's fitting for the weekend of celebrations that we just had. Let us be proud to serve our sovereign queen as her local government and continue to make ABC the great place that it thrives to be. Her Majesty, you are a fantastic lady and we love her. I now look forward to getting back to the benches and seeing the lovely bromance that has been flourishing that I've noticed over the last year. Councillor Cosby, councillor Lowry, it has been a joy to watch. And whilst I never got the chance to be first citizen for Armed Forces Day, which is coming to Bomb Bridge on the 18th of June 2020, I'm delighted that after so many years of working behind the scenes, to see Armed Forces Day reach our borough and indeed the star of the county down or via own Bomb Bridge town. I would like to take this final opportunity to say thank you to your servicemen and women, our veterans, the PSNA, the RUCGC, who recently celebrated the 100th anniversary, and to all our security force and service personnel, both past and present, and your families. Thank you. Thank you for your service to your queen and country. This time last year, Alderman Spears nominated me as on behalf of the Allstate Unionist Party. And I hope, Jim, that I've done you proud. They've done our party proud, this council, and most importantly, the citizens of this borough. My colleague Alderman Liam Burns informed me that not only was I the first Bomb Bridge orange man to hold the first sentence's office, but also the first county down orange man and the first veteran. Not only that, but today I have donated the defib to the people of Bomb Bridge, which will hopefully be shortly placed in the town centre. So now I'm signing off as Lord Mayor. God bless. Fugabala. Thank you. Thank you, members. Alderman Spears.
Lord Mayor, just say a few words in appreciation to yourself. As you entered this role a year ago, we were on a slack period of the COVID virus. Things were apparently returning to somewhere near normal. As you and others are no doubt aware, that didn't turn out to be the position. It in fact got worse and it was become quite a difficult time for any citizen, but particularly yourself as Lord Mayor. You did get COVID yourself and unfortunately were out of service for a few days, but thank God that you did return to health fairly quickly again and out and about. Yes, as far as your role as Lord Mayor, yes, you were nominated by ourselves as a party last year. And I was delighted to be able to do that. I must say, you've done us proud. And not only did you do us proud as a party, you've done yourself proud in terms of the way you carried out your role in a very, very dignified and very good manner. And you've done this borough proud in every area that you covered and every event that you were involved in. I had the privilege of being at many, many events that you were at and there as mayor. And I certainly was particularly proud that you were part of a team that I was on. And you certainly done yourself and your family and the wider district in your role that you played with full remarks. And I certainly have the greatest pleasure in saying that you've done that to the fullest extent. And I thank you, not only on my own behalf, on behalf of the party that I represent, but I have no doubt on behalf of each and every citizen within this borough for the way you carried out your work. And thank you for that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Spears. Councillor Gavin Savage from Chinatown, please.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Apologies, I had some technical difficulties at the start. So today, on behalf of our party, welcome councillor Rankin back and also welcome councillor Johnson to your first meeting. Lord Mayor, as you know yourself, the years went in very fast and I had a very busy schedule. On a personal note, I would like to thank you very much for accommodating a few civic receptions that I had requested. They were all fantastic evenings. You were an amazing host, as was your wife Andrea. And young Billy was there as well and he entertained people as well. But the people who attended receptions, Lord Mayor remarked how at ease that you made them feel. You took them around the building and they all went away saying that a good night's crack. And you can't want more than that when you're dealing with the citizens of the borough. You did get about quite a bit, as I said, and you did represent the borough very well. And also that's a, I've lost my train of thought here, Lord Mayor, sorry about that there. But it's just you've done an excellent job throughout the year and I just hope that you get a bit of time now to spend with your family and put your feet up and get your thoughts back and ready to join planning committee again. So thank you very much, Lord Mayor Bar and best wishes going forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Savage. And thank you for reminding me about Paul. Councillor Mark Baxter, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, soon to be former Lord Mayor, which is a title that you'll hold forever now. It's a great accolade to become the Lord Mayor of a borough. And I just want to congratulate you on behalf of the DUP on the successful year that you had. I think it was nice to come in tonight and be able to shake your hand on the way in because certainly whenever you were an incoming Lord Mayor at the start, shaking hands was a real no-no. And now we're starting to get back to that. I think that sort of mirrors the year that you had. I think last year was a very, very strange year before you came in. And as you went through the year, more and more events started to come in and we started to come back to, I suppose, some form of normality to near the end where I'm sure you've had many receptions and many people and you'd be glad maybe now to take a bit of a backseat and get your breath back. And it was nice even to see that there's a few more creeping back in now to the chamber and hopefully as we continue this year, by the end of the year, some might even have a full house. And albeit I might have to give a few some directions. But that aside, it's been a, it's been a great year for you. You've been a great ambassador for the borough. And indeed, you've been a great ambassador. And even last week, I spoke to you about veterans as well. I've certainly been at the forefront of your year in office, as well as of course your charities. It was good to see your charities out again the other night at the Jubilee celebrations in which you led the way over the weekend. Also, it was good to see your wife Andrea with you. And it was good that the Lady Meres did play a very active role throughout the year. And that showed them, I think, people and groups coming in that it's a very friendly place to come into. And I think as councillor Savage even said before, you're a Lord Mayor. When you're a Lord Mayor, you're a Lord Mayor for everyone. And I think you've certainly, you've certainly shown that over the last 12 months. So just as you come back to the benches, I wish you well. I wish Andrea well. Maybe in a couple of months, she might be saying that one, she's maybe sick of the sight of you again that you've been away for too long. But it'll be good to have you back on the benches and all the best and well done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate your kind words. Councillor Thomas O'Halloran, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And like others, can I join in congratulating you on what was a busy but very successful year? And before Alderman Spears spoke, I'd written down the words, you were speaking about a credit. This is a credit to council, to your family and most of all to yourself. You, like everyone who has held that role, you bring a bit of your own personality and shape the role in the way it suits you. And I know I joined you at an event in the City Hotel where money was raised for, in fact, the three of us were there that night where money was raised for a number of charities, including the children's cancer funds. And on that night, they said they had raised £65,000. But before they got the cheques handed over, that had reached 81,000. And I know you were very gracious in the way you greeted young Niall on the night. And thankfully, since that event, Niall has completed his cancer treatments. But like everyone else, want to join you and wishing you well. As someone who has held the first citizens' office in Armagh, you'll find tomorrow the emails slow down, the phone doesn't ring as often and you go, I'm at home this evening. So that hits you fairly quick. But as others have said, let's hope that you don't torture Andrea so much. Maybe get a bit of grass cut and tidy it up around the house. So thank you.
I think she's already, thank you very much. Councillor Brown Pope, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And on behalf of our group, I would also like to congratulate you on your year. And in particular, I'd like to pay tribute to your key involvement in the council's response to the Ukraine crisis and the impact of the war, the setting up of the transport hub for essential supplies. And then the reception assistance centre showed this council at its very best. I also want to pay tribute and say thanks to the Lady Meres, Andrea, for being so proactive and attending council events, you know, with you during the year. This has been a busy year, especially because of the recovery. And I think there was a very large number of events that you, that you needed to attend. So I certainly wish you well with everything in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Pope. Thank you. Councillor Paul Barry, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And could I also congratulate you on your
And could I also congratulate you on your year in office? I would concur with every comment and remark that has been made in relation to the leadership that you have shown in the past year. And clearly, whilst every year is a challenge, thankfully, we've managed to get through it with your stern and good leadership. And, you know, during the year, there have been many big events, small events, but big events, namely the N I centenary, which you have mentioned, your leadership through the Ukraine Support Hub, and indeed, even more recent days, the Queen's Platinum Jubilee events, to which you attended many, many events. But all your different events that you have tended across the community has been met with great pride. And you posed the question and hoped that you'd done your group leader and your group proud. Well, I would just like to say, as others have said, that you have done this council proud and also as individual councillors for the leadership and commitment that you have shown to the A B C area. And it has been a pride to see you in your position as Lord Mayor and indeed not forgetting the Lord Mayoris Andrea for being with you on many occasions and it's shown the commitment that you and your family give to this role, which was very heartening, not just to us as councillors, because you were the ambassador and you carried out your role with great pride, dignity, to which something that you as an individual and your wife and family should be very proud of. It was a proud moment for you. It was a proud year for you and your family. And I would just like to wish you all the very best in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Your kind words. Councillor McAllyden, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, Glenn, as Chair of Economic Development, this last year I had the pleasure of working with you and attending many events with yourself and Andrea, and you're always a pleasure to work with. You carried out your role in a fine, proud way and a dignified way representing the borough really well. You've been very generous with your time towards me and my community. So on that, I want to thank you very much for that and wish you all the best going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, members, for your kind words. And I would just wish to say good luck to our incoming Lord Mayor. It's been a pleasure. Thank you very much, members.
Good evening, Aldermen, councillors. We now move to item 4.1 on the agenda, which is the appointment of the Lord Mayor for the incoming year 2022-2023. And as members know, year four of this term of council falls to the Democratic Unionist Party. And I would now invite the party's nominating officer, councillor Baxter, to provide a nomination for the position of Lord Mayor. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chief Executive. And I know this will come as a big surprise to everybody in the chamber because it's always, as every year, the worst kept secret within these halls over here at A B C Council. But I'm delighted tonight to nominate the name of a close friend of mine and a colleague here for many years. I was going to say I've known Paul all my life. But he was about, I've known him all my life, but I think he was 15 or 16 when he first met me as a baby. And there's been a lifelong association and I'm glad to see that his parents are here tonight in the public gallery. And that's Dr Fred Greenfield and his wife Jean, who are dear friends of my parents as well, indeed. Dr Greenfield, I was going to say Christendere, but as a good Presbyterian, he was dedicated. And Fred Greenfield had the pleasure, and I call it a pleasure, maybe others wouldn't, of dedicating me all those years ago, as I said, whenever Paul was just going to high school, I think. And I do joke, of course, there's only a few years between us. But it's a delight tonight to, why propose Paul Greenfield as Lord Mayor. The scene, and I said there was a lifelong association there whenever Paul and his family emigrated to Canada. I'm not sure when, it was 1986 or 1987. There were some things that they have to offload and his mum Jean was hunting out some of Paul's toys. And I don't know how well that went down, but I got some of Paul's toys all those years ago as well. I don't think he's ever forgiven me for that. So it is a delight tonight to be able to propose him for Lord Mayor. I wish him all the best. I have no doubt that Paul will bring, as everyone does their own stamp, to the position of the First Citizen of the Borough, to him and to his wife Fiona and the kids. I wish him all the best as he takes on this very important role. He's certainly no stranger to these benches. He has served as Deputy Lord Mayor previously and as Chair of Development. So he certainly knows how the mechanics of it all works. And I have no doubt that he'll be a very popular Lord Mayor and a Lord Mayor for everyone. And it's a great delight tonight to propose officially as nominating officer of the DUP on behalf of the party, Lord Mayor, Paul Greenfield, and wish him all the best for the incoming 12 months.
Truly, it is a humbling experience to be sitting here tonight and to represent the people of Armagh, Banbridge and Galway as your first citizen. Never when I first ran for council in Banbridge did I think that one day I would be sitting here. But just for the record, it was a scale electric set councillor Baxter got, he would cheat in eyes. And I'm still not quite over it yet, but I know my mum, she agrees that he did take a breath with his two arms open. And I think he was about three years older than me whenever that happened, but he was too old for scale electrics. But can I firstly thank my party colleagues for their putting their faith in me to take up this privileged position? And I thank them for all their support. As I look over to my right and I see them all here, I know I will get plenty of advice and guidance as we see quite a few former mayors and Lord Mayors sitting amongst them who have all done this role to the best of their ability and very successfully in the past. And I'm also sure when I look over to the right, close to where I was sitting, I'd be kept cracking the standing orders as well as councillor Cosby is there and he's given me a nod, he's already warned me. So we'll try and do our best now there. But I want to thank and put on record tonight a tribute to our outgoing Lord Mayor and Deputy Mayor, who both carried out their roles with great respect and dignity, and I wish them well in the future. Again, I was speaking to Glenn and Andrea at the Beacon Light in Banbridge on Thursday even. And they certainly have had a very, very busy year. And I'm sure they will be glad to get a free time together. But I know Glenn has enjoyed your engagement, so has Andrea. And also, if I'm right, Glenn, you said last year about bringing your kids, they were important to you. And certainly they have done very well, Alex, Cody and Billy. I think of them right, I remember you saying one of them might be screaming and kicking, but giving them a bye ball. But they've done fantastic and they have certainly been a credit to you and me. During the term, I'm determined to do all I can to profile all of this borough as a welcome and inspiring place to live, work, invest and visit. I will use my office to maximise every opportunity available to improve the quality of life for all our citizens socially and economically. I look forward to visiting many of our businesses, especially our smaller local businesses who are the backbone of our towns and villages. We have many great community groups, church groups, sports groups, who do much to enhance our communities. And I look forward to visiting as many as possible over my term and working with you all. As a council, we have had many successes that we have accomplished since we were first formed A B C Council and our community existence. But we still have much to do. And in this year, I think it's important to implement the changes necessary to improve this great borough for everyone who lives, works and socialises in it. I want to thank my wife Fiona and children, Amy, Kilda and Sophia. Amy is at home studying for G C S, but Kilda and Sophia and Fiona are here. And I thank them for all their love and support and encouragement to me and also for keeping me grounded for sometimes I need it. And I thank them for that. Also, my mum and dad, they've been referenced here, and my dad and mum are here and have always supported me, encouraged me. And I want to thank them tonight for the help and advice that they have given me and guidance. I'm not going to speak very long. It's been referenced, my father's minister. So he always says he's finishing shortly and then he has another pointer too. But I'm going to keep it very brief here tonight. And we joked before, it's just getting the landing point in the last place. And I see a former councillor, Reverend Parks, or he knows where it is. He struggles to get her stopped some nights too, I think. But it's good to see him here. But I definitely want to be a welcoming Lord Mayor for everyone to come in and visit. And I want to work with all our fellow Aldermen, councillors, council officers in the year ahead to represent the people of this borough during increasingly challenging times. Again, I want to thank all our staff and I look forward to working with each and every one of them. I want to also thank the people of Banbridge D E A who voted for me and who have had privilege to represent since the formation of the A B C Council. And I will continue to work hard for them. Also, I want to just put on record my thanks to our dear councillor colleague, Alderman Junior McCrum, who was always very encouraging to me. And I know he would be delighted tonight if he were here with us. As with previous Lord Mayors, I want to work hard to raise money, as our previous ones have done for charities, dearly to my own family and to my own heart and for all worthy causes which we can help with. Which this will sort of be a later stage. Just before I finish my remarks tonight, and I said I would keep them short and will do. But I just want to think, thinking about my closing remarks today, I was thinking as a Deputy Lord Mayor a few years ago, I had a grip for this, you've been on that occasion at the end. I thank my Lord and Savior for his guidance and help to me over that year. Again, tonight, I want also to put my trust in him to lead and guide me the year ahead. It says in Proverbs 3, "In all thy ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your paths." And as I commence my year in office, I pray that our paths will be directed as we meet and take decisions together for the betterment of the people of our borough. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kevin Savage.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And just to congratulate you taking on this new post, hosting in football parlour. You've done the double. You were Deputy Lord Mayor and now you're Lord Mayor. So that is a good achievement as well. On a personal level, I can remember when I started in council back in 2016, when you were Deputy Mayor, you were hosting an event in Guildford Bowling Club. And you're very welcoming to me as a new member then, and I would like to thank you for that. I do know, Paul, that you will be a great Lord Mayor. Yeah, you've proved that throughout the years as you work on the council and also when you chaired the Economic Development Committee. You've always been positive in your dealings with all members. Your time in charity economic development was very successful. And I always find you accommodating to all members and you give everybody the opportunity to speak. I do know from working alongside you in different issues in the Banbridge town, you're very passionate about looking after the people of Banbridge and creating a good environment for them to work, live and shop in. And I know you'll continue to promote Banbridge and indeed the borough in that manner. So in closing, I wish you every success this year. And it's also to note that that's also a hat-trick of Lord Mayor for the Banbridge D E A. So that's also a positive reflection on the political representatives from this borough. So congratulations, Paul, and well done.
Thank you, councillor Savage. And councillor Baxter.
I wasn't getting Lord Mayor.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And it was just simply to wish my colleague councillor Greenfield all the best in the year ahead. And as councillor Savage has said, he's a former Lord Mayor and won myself five years ago, believe it or not. So one thing you will find is that your year will go quick. And then if Godspeed, your years will go quicker after. I've found anyway, it's hard to believe that time just moves so quickly. So just a bit of advice would be to enjoy it while it's going on and take in as much as you can of the borough. And of course councillor Savage will stake a bit of a claim there, as he did when I was there. Banbridge featured quite heavily despite my best efforts to make Armagh a feature. You know, there's a few Banbridge people there. You know, you're a Banbridge councillor yourself, so you'll know all about it. And councillor Magellan, I remember him sticking a bit of a claim as well. So between pipes and drums and all sorts, I think Banbridge will be thoroughly well represented with councillor Greenfield in the prime position. So I wish you all the best and hope you have a tremendous year and that you raise a lot of money for your charities. And I know we'll be behind you as a council and I think that is one thing that is important, that we do channel a lot of support to you, you know, as elected representatives to make the most of the year and office and ensure that our borough continues to thrive. So all the best in your role. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. And councillor O'Halloran.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations on taking up the new role. During our time on this council together, I've always found you to be an absolute gentleman. And I know you'll bring that same spirit to your year in office. And can, you reference councillor Cosby and his fondness for standing orders. So in that, may your hardest and most difficult decisions be to learn when to cut his mic off. Best wishes for the year ahead.
Thank you for the advice, or councillor O'Halloran. Councillor Poole.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I would also like to congratulate you on your new appointment. And again, of course, I'm absolutely delighted another Banbridge D E A councillor has taken this position. And what is going to be another busy year with no doubt some challenges. I know we both attended, went over in November to visit France and Belgium and the Somme. And I think sometimes in those occasions, you know, you're a little bit less formal, that we're able to get to know each other a bit and have chats. And I'm absolutely certain you'll do a really good job as Lord Mayor and all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Poole. Councillor Barry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And on a personal level, as one who has known you for many years outside of politics, but now in the political arena, I would like to personally wish you and indeed your wife and family all the very best for the year ahead. I have no doubt you will do a tremendous job. I have the pleasure of knowing your family and councillor O'Halloran called you a gentleman. And that is very, very fitting because across the political arena and anybody that knows Paul Greenfield knows that he is a gentleman and he treats people with respect and treats people equally. And I'm delighted for your family and obviously if some night he can't do it, well then Reverend Fred could step in, only keeping to his time or it could be, our meetings are long enough, it could be worse when a free Presbyterian minister could send to the chair. But it's good that you're in that position and I know that you will do a fantastic job. And I'd like to wish you all the very best in the year ahead.
Thank you, councillor Barry. And I'm sure my follow-up words are the offer. Alderman Spears.
Lord Mayor, first of all, congratulations on you being elected to this office. A very great privilege and I pay you a tribute. I hadn't the privilege of knowing you until you and I both came here. But in any event, since then, I've found you, as others have referred to, as a gentleman. I have no doubt in my dealings with you. And I have little doubt that you will equally serve with dignity the people of this borough in the way that you have acted in this council. I know that you are from Banbridge. You're going to get slightly worried, you know, about the fact that you're not from the first city, from the first city. But in any event, we are quite sure there's enough of us here that will not let you forget, you know, that it's still a very important place. But in any event, leave all that aside, I certainly wish you well. And I have no problem or no issue in terms of you leading forward in this particular year. As you have rightly referred to, the opportunities that no doubt will present themselves in the economic sphere across this community in the coming year will be something that we will all have to rise to the occasion on. And I have no doubt in that respect, you will be there to give the leadership as and when necessary. So I thank you and wish you well and your family for the coming year. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Spears, and thank you each one for the kind words. Thank you, Alderman Spears, and thank you each one for the kind words. No more hands up or lights on. So at this stage, I'll hand over to our chief executive for the appointment of the deputy Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and congratulations on your appointment. Next item on the agenda is item four point two, the appointment of deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year. And before doing so, Lord Mayor is normally, it's on the agenda for outgoing deputy Lord Mayor. I know councillor Donnelly has been in touch, she has had, she's supposed to be joined remotely, is having connection problems. Councillor Nelson wishes to say a few words, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Executive, and I also congratulate our new Lord Mayor and wish him well in the year ahead. And it's a real, real honour of a role, but a huge commitment and sacrifice is made. So I really do wish you well. And the deputy Lord Mayor sends her sincere apologies. And she has had an absolutely fantastic year as deputy Lord Mayor and. She asked me to congratulate Alderman Barr on the success on your he has had. And in particular, the partnership approach that he embarked upon alongside her. And when speaking to her on the phone in advance of me speaking on her behalf this evening. She reflected just on how proud she was to take on the role and bring it to the city of Armagh where her heart really is. And I asked her what her highlights were and she said that. She really enjoyed working with young people, particularly within the GA community of which she is a stalwart and also the work she's done locally with the special Olympic squad. So. Sort of working with the young people really stood out for her. And I know I personally never found her wanting when asking her to make groups or indeed donate to them. What I would say about councillor Donnelly is she does her work quietly, but my goodness, she put her heart and soul into it and. I find that during her term, she selflessly reached out to those that were in most need, be it the homeless, the elderly, the sick or the war torn. So despite COVID, I think she has left a lasting legacy. And on behalf of our party group, and we're certainly very proud of her, and on behalf of us and councillor Donnelly, I'd wish to. Congratulate our new and incoming deputy Lord Mayor and wish them every success also.
Lord Mayor, if you're happy enough then to proceed on, the next order of business is the appointment of the deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year twenty two, twenty three. And once again, that position falls upon Democratic Unionist Party. And I would again call on the nominating officer for the party councillor Baxter to provide the nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to say Lord Mayor, but not the chief executive. You haven't been promoted to that stage yet, Roger. This is the, I suppose, the second best cap secret in these chambers this evening. And it's a great privilege tonight to propose a colleague of mine, not only a colleague, but a colleague in the DEA as well of Lagan River. A champion indeed of the rural areas and a champion of the farmer and coming from an agricultural background himself. And particularly a champion of conservation and all those things related to that. And anybody who knows councillor McKellen, as an Othel scholar as well, will know that he really does put those things forefront. And in his in his council life and what he brings to us as a council group into that role. And councillor McKellen is a very measured and logical and critical thinker. And brings a very measured response to some of the debates we have in our own council group meetings. And certainly is very switched on when it comes to the complexity sometimes of of this chamber and the workings of it and policies and all that type of thing. So it's a great pleasure tonight to propose officially on behalf of the Democrat Unionist Party, councillor Tim McKellen. And tonight to the role of deputy Lord Mayor, there's been much said at the night about the Lord Mayor and about. How that he is a gentleman. Well, I can tell you tonight the deputy Lord Mayor is also a gentleman. I think that'll be echoed across the chamber as well. And he will certainly treat everybody fairly in that role and the places when he has to step up. And when the Lord Mayor is unavailable or whatever. So to him and to his wife Karen and to his children. It's good to see, I think there's some of his family members in the chamber tonight in the public gallery. It's good to see them here as well. So I wish them all the best and wish them a very successful year. And to you, Tim, and officially, as I've said, to officially propose councillor Tim McKellen to the role of deputy Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Baxter for the nomination. And we're going to bring in our new deputy Lord Mayor. Could I be the first to congratulate you? Deputy Lord Mayor, and I see you brought a fan for with you. It wasn't here for me, the timing wasn't right there, but I do want to be the first to congratulate you.
Lord Mayor, Alderman members, can I thank you for electing me as deputy Lord Mayor of Armagh City, Banbridge, Ankeric, Avonborough. This is really a great honour and privilege for me. Indeed, Lord Mayor, many congratulations on your election and I trust that you have a fantastic year as our Lord Mayor. May I thank my heavenly father for all his blessings thus far and trust him for the days ahead. Thanks are due to my Democratic Unionist Party colleagues for placing their faith in me for this appointment. I would like to say a huge thank you to my family for all their help and support. Over the years and especially these last three years on council. Some members will know of the health challenges that Karen, my wife, has been going through. And indeed shielding requirements mean that Karen is unable to join us this evening. But I'm pleased to report that she is getting stronger during this post recovery phase. I must also pay tribute to my late father this evening, members. I know he would be proud. Of his boy, the farmer from Tandragi, on being elected as deputy Lord Mayor. It's great to have my mum here this evening with Hannah and with Nathan. And unfortunately, exam revision dictates that my older two kids, Cameron and Rachel, couldn't be here. Members may also thank my predecessor councillor Donnelly for her year of service as deputy Lord Mayor. And indeed, thanks are also due to the electors of the Lagan River DEA that sent me here. Indeed, members, one party colleague said to me a few weeks ago, now, Tim, there's more to ABC than Canalin. On a more serious note, members, I'm really looking forward to getting out across the whole borough during my year. Finally, Lord Mayor, I look forward to working with you during the upcoming year as we collectively represent ABC council and all our residents. Members, that's me done. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy Lord Mayor and councillor Bruno Hoggie.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations on your new role. And I would just like to offer our congratulations as well on behalf of myself and Sinn Fein. Party group into our new deputy Lord Mayor, as well as giving my thanks to the outgoing deputy Lord Mayor Jackie Donnelly. And to the incoming Lord Deputy Lord Mayor, I have no doubt that it'll be a fantastic year and we're really looking forward to working with you and seeing what this year has in store for you.
Thank you, councillor Hoggie and councillor Labrie.
Good morning, good. Lord Mayor, thank you. Just want to begin by thanking outgoing deputy Lord Mayor councillor Donnelly for her year of service in the role. I know she had a good year and particularly her work with young people as recognised in meeting will certainly serve the borough well. I know taking up such a role requires sacrifice and support for our family members. I'd just like to pass on our thanks as a borough to her family as well for allowing her to carry out the role. So wish her well for the future. But also I have the privilege of thanking and wishing well councillor McKellen on his role as deputy Lord Mayor. For your behalf of my party lands, myself and councillor McKellen were both elected in twenty nineteen. And the wiser heads in our parties put us on both on the planning committee, which is a bit of baptism of fire and certainly. Like myself, councillor McKellen was certainly very enthusiastic and got straight into those complex planning applications, asking questions. I know councillor McKellen will be equally as enthusiastic and on the front foot in terms of his role as deputy Lord Mayor for the borough. So I wish councillor McKellen the very best year ahead for the role. And he's welcoming a high gallon and alley time as well as canal and supporting those rural villages. And I'm sure Armagh City as well to keep Alderman Spears happy. But just congratulations on behalf of my party and to the Lord Mayor as well. I've always known the Lord Mayor as a gentleman and I know he will do an excellent job in the role for the year ahead as well. So thank you for my parties.
Thank you, councillor Labrie and councillor Holland.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. And like others, deputy Lord Mayor can congratulate you on your appointment this evening. And to wish you and your family well in the year ahead. And we always look at the dynamics between the Lord Mayor and the deputy Lord Mayor and up until now, it's been two separate parties. And so this year might be just the interesting one to watch out. But let's hope you continue to be friends in the year ahead. But look, very best wishes to you and like others, joining in the thanks to councillor Donnelly for her year as deputy Lord Mayor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holland and Alderman Spears.
Lord Mayor, I just want to say a word of congratulations to one of my constituents, councillor McKellen. On his elevation to the role of deputy Lord Mayor. I know councillor McKellen for quite a number of years. He mentioned his father, I knew his father. Indeed, the family as my wife comes from that far away from that part of the country as he would know. And I have known him for a good number of years. He does some farming in my part of the world as well and. I meet him from time to time. But in any event, I have certainly found that he has an interest in farming. And he has a tremendous interest in Lagan River and that slightly worries me because. I have a colleague that begins to think that Lagan River had been a sort of forgotten bird. So. I'm a sort of beginning to get slightly worried now that we have, we have a couple of people to deal with in any event. That Armagh replaces others that maybe be left behind in as a consequence of this. But I have no doubt there's plenty of us there that will. No doubt remind him and others that that cannot be the case. But in any event, councillor McKellen, I wish you well in your role. And I hope that you have a successful year in office. Thank you. And your family and I hope and trust your wife keeps well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Spears and councillor Barry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And could I also wish the deputy Lord Mayor councillor McKellen all the very best for his year ahead. I've had the pleasure of knowing him also outside the political arena and now he's inside it. But I would like to wish him well. He's a chap with creativity and during his first term here in council, he has certainly acted with great ability. And strengthened the chamber here and outside the chamber. And I have no doubt he will do a wonderful job. He'll be a great deputy to you, Lord Mayor. And wish you and your wife indeed and family all the very best for the year ahead.
Thank you, councillor Barry and councillor Cosby.
Hey, thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I be associated with the remarks just already previously made in relation to your own elevation to your new role. And to that of the deputy Lord Mayor's role as well. Many will give you advice, Lord Mayor, there's no doubt about that. Councillor Holland's already attempted that this evening about my microphone. But I know you will make your own decisions in that regard. But it's just to say, it's a pleasure to have my name ringing around this chamber before even open my mouth from every other party except for my own. But that says a lot about them, I suppose. But just to say to you, deputy Lord Mayor, I. I congratulate you on your elevation to the role. I know when you came in in twenty nineteen that you came out of the blocks fairly quickly. And I guess Canalin and every road and grass verge has been tramped on by the fate of Timothy McClellan. There's no doubt about that. And so I know in this role that you will be, you will treat the role with the same fervour as you do for the work that you do for your constituents. So congratulations, wish you and your family. And to Lord Mayor, to you and your family as well, every success in what will be no doubt a very busy year. And in relation to the outgoing Lord Mayor, if I can just say, Lord Mayor, there was reference made a number of weeks to go to a bromance. I wasn't sure what that was referenced to. It was made more clear to me this evening. When councillor Lavery was mentioned in the same sentence as I was, and I've got good news for councillor Lavery, I'm joining the planning committee on Wednesday.
And just for the record, he turned his own mic off there. That wasn't me. Councillor Tinsley.
And I just want to also say congratulations to you, Lord Mayor, and to the deputy Lord Mayor. And Paul and Tim, you're not only colleagues to me, but you're very special friends with a great friendship. We help each other. And through, you know, issues and things that's happening on the council and I value your friendship and throughout our time on council. I just want to bless, you know, wish you all the very best that you have good health and that you and your families have a great year. And that you will just, I know together that we're very blessed in this council to have two very strong, kind, thoughtful Christian gentlemen representing this council. And I know you won't let us down. And that I just wish you all the very, very best. And I know that your families tonight, whether they're listening in or whether they're in the chamber, are extremely proud of you both. So all the very best for the future, for the year. Thank you.
You councillor Tinsley and Alderman Barr.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. As a former Lord Mayor, I wish to take this opportunity to congratulate yourself and the lady Maris. On your elevation too. I think it's been sort of missed throughout the congratulations. But congratulations to you both and your family and to the deputy Lord Mayor as well to congratulate yourself and. Have a successful year. Go and have a good bit of crack and enjoy it. That's the best thing I can say to you. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And just, Debbie Lord Mayor just going to move for a comment.
Yes, indeed, Lord Mayor. It's just to thank members from right across the chamber for their kind wishes. And again, I really look forward. To working with everyone as we progress our borough. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy Lord Mayor. Will I move on to four point three and hand back to chief executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, item four point three is the appointment to the other positions of responsibility. And members know that effectively means the chairs and the vice chairs of all of our committees. You have been furnished with the schedule of those in advance of the meeting. So, Lord Mayor, it's really just, I suppose, for council to confirm its agreement to those positions. Members are all agreed. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, and our next item, again, is appointment to committees. Back to chief executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, item five, similarly then, is the makeup of the various committees and those members that will be attending. Each of those committees. So, Lord Mayor, once again, just to get council's agreement to the membership. Members are all agreed.
Councillor Nicholson.
Yep, thank you, Lord Mayor, and all the best through your next twelve months in the hot seat. I'm sure it'll be, it will be a hot one, I'm sure, especially in an election year. I'm sure there'll be a few things coming out. And of course, Tim, deputy, a fellow planning. But you've missed Tim on the committee. I have to say you were a very useful member in the committee and of course we've got a good replacement councillor Cosby. He'll maybe stay this course this time, only stayed for a few months the last time and but look forward to working with him and the committee going forward. No, look. look forward to working with him and the committee going forward. No, look, I don't know what's happened here, but with the Lord Mayor, the iconic Lord Mayor, I'm off the environment committee. Glenn's back on on the environment committee instead of me. So just want to make that point, Roger. So and I think also Ian Burns is off leisure, because Glenn's taken his two positions back. So, okay, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. And Alderman, would you ruin your eyes on you? Okay, okay.
Lord Mayor, we'll pick those up. Thank you, councillor Nicholson.
Okay, and our next item then, it's item six, report on the appointment of Alderman. I'm going to bring in the chief executive.
Thank you again, Lord Mayor. Yes, item six, appointment of Alderman. And members will be aware that these are positions that we appointed at the start of our council term. And you will also be aware that very sadly, Alderman McCrum passed away in July of last year, and Alderman Rankin, at the time, in March this year, had resigned. So there are two vacant Alderman positions on council. The regulations state that the vacancies can only be filled by, at the next council meeting, or the next annual meeting of council, which is obviously this evening, Lord Mayor. So they couldn't be filled before now. All nominations for the position of Alderman must be proposed and then seconded for them to be valid. And also, the nominees must assent to the nomination. And the nominations will be until the end of the current council term. So, Lord Mayor, I'm in members' hands with regard to the filling of the two vacant Alderman positions.
Thank you, chief executive. But we're now councillor Colesby, you've really done.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And this is one of those occasions where memories of our former colleague come back in relation to Junior McCrum. Junior was an Alderman in this council from 2014 until July last year. And so for us, it is bittersweet that we would be dealing with these positions this evening. So if I could, Lord Mayor, just propose that Alderman Rankin, that councillor Rankin and councillor Baxter would adopt the title of Alderman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Colesby and Alderman Woodruff.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very happy to second the proposal, so ablely made by councillor Osby.
Thank you, Alderman Woodruff. And firstly, I ask councillor Rankin if you're willing to accept. Councillor Baxter, yeah. Okay, they've accepted, they've proposed, we've all agreed. All agreed. Thank you. Which we're coming close to the end of our meeting tonight. Our end item seven, correspondence, and agenda made, any other relevant business. And we have one request coming in from further relevant business, and it's councillor Nelson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for so kindly taking and accepting this item of any other business. Lord Mayor, as you'll know, at the weekend, sadly, we witnessed the ugly face of sectarianism, as some gathered to celebrate the Platinum Jubilee of the Queen. Indeed, I would imagine that Her Majesty herself would wish to disassociate herself with those behaviours, given the acts of peace and reconciliation that she herself has embarked upon. However, I don't want to give those involved any further out time. Instead, I want to reflect on Michaela McCaravey, a young woman of 27, who was much loved by her friends and family, a wife, a daughter, a sister, and a friend. The special bond she shared with her dad was something that always stood out for me. Michaela's legacy lives on in the Michaela Foundation, which has been a beacon of light for so many young people. And that is how Michaela is to be remembered. That is how she will live on in the hearts and minds of many. Lord Mayor, sorry because you got caught doesn't quite cut it for me. However, the one positive that has come out of this weekend is the absolute rejection of sectarianism we have seen from a broad section of society here, a true mark of where the majority of us are. And so in that spirit, Lord Mayor, I would like to propose that we write to the heart of McCaravey families to offer our full and unequivocal support, expressing our solidarity and indeed our admiration for them and for Michaela. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Nelson and councillor O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to second that proposal from councillor Nelson. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor O'Hanlon?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor, and want to be associated with the comments of councillor Nelson. I think it's important that we note the event, and we note that there are ongoing investigations. So it's important that we all are cautious as to what we say. However, I think it was a, John McCaravey put it best in a tweet over the weekend when he said that hate hurts, but love will win out. And I think that's where we should leave it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor O'Hanlon. Yes, certainly will agree to request and be writing on behalf of the council. And just that we're all agreed. All agreed. Thank you. Well, that was the end of our meeting. I want to thank each one of you for your attendance, and especially for the kind words to myself and Deputy Lord Mayor. We do look forward to working with each one throughout this year. And at the end of our meeting, I just want to say thank you.